Will the meeting please come to order? Will the members please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing to take the oath?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Will the members please stay rising and put up your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge according to law the duties as a member of the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich to the best of your ability, so help you God? Congratulations. Item two now comes before us to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations?
Happy New Year, everyone, fellow RTM members, selectmen, BET and Board of Ed members, and distinguished guests. Today I rise to nominate Tom Byrne for the position of moderator. I met Tom eight years ago when I first joined the RTM. He's always been encouraging to all members, and many who I spoke to, both old and new, have said they have deep respect for Tom, his appreciation of his even-handedness, his equanimity, his astonishing knowledge of Robert's Rules. And consequently, we've all learned a great deal from him. I'm personally impressed, and was actually amazed, sorry, Tom, by his ability to not only organize but run a fair meeting. And when I was thinking back on all my RTM meetings, I realized I did not even know nor could I discern if he had a party affiliation. Tom rarely offered political opinions in our many conversations and emails, and especially while at the helm on stage. As a point of information, Silver's District Six comrades, when questioned, did not know his political affiliation either. For background, Tom grew up in Westchester, graduated from Yale University, and then attended Stanford Law School. A fun fact, Tom played on the first Yale Ultimate Frisbee team. A classmate from New Jersey who had started the sport at home had transplanted it at Yale. Tom passed the bar in 1981 and went to work for Dave Barry and Howard, and then Pullman Conley. After 15 years in law, Tom changed careers and became an AP physics teacher in the new Rochelle Public Schools, which allowed him to privately tutor students, a favorite thing to do, and a favorite subject that he loved. Tom Byrne is a family man who's been married for 40 years, that's amazing accomplishment, and has continued his legacy of giving back by instilling in his children a life of service. His daughter attended the United States Naval Academy and is now a helicopter pilot, and she will serve at least seven more years for our country. One of his sons is captain of our own Sound Beach Fire Department and the other a volunteer fireman, truly an amazing family. Tom Byrne has served the RTM for 30 years and 22 as our moderator. When he first joined in 1988, his children were much younger, and he sought out to work on the Education Committee where he served for many years. He has also served as his District Six Chair. Another fun fact about Tom is that to this day, he is a basketball and baseball referee, so when I couldn't remember how I knew him, then I remembered. As I spoke with many district and committee chairs over the years, they too have shared that they have reached out to Tom many times to confirm bylaws or nuances of Robert's Rules so that they may conduct their own district and committee chairs and affairs properly. Knowing how myself and others use him as a resource, I can only imagine on any given day what Tom's inbox looks like. That said, he always gets back to you, less than 24 hours, never complains, and never makes you feel like an imbecile. However, the biggest task and most challenging is that of moving forward our own large 230 RTM member meeting in a productive fashion. When people are rising for point of order, but they really mean point of information, or when people rise for point of information when they really have a question, Tom must always weigh in. He additionally has the lovely job of watching over and monitoring the time limits when they are voted forth by the body, enforcing this on speakers who clearly would rather not have their time limited, and then having to remind them when their time is up, all that leading to no fun for Tom. All in all, having to rule over the shenanigans of our many guests and members is a thankless job. So I rise today to nominate my colleague, Tom Byrne, as moderator, and I ask for you to second him and then vote him in. But more importantly, or equally importantly, I also rise to thank him for massively handling the thankless job of keeping us all in line. Thank you.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? I will entertain a motion to that nominations be closed. Second? All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? The motion has been carried. While voting is taking place, if anyone came in late, please come forward to take
I need to be on yellow to keep it.
You think you said?
Yeah.
I'll check my mail later.
They went out, actually. If not, you were secretary.
Yeah. I'll look again.
Oh, sure. The vote is in. It's 192. Congratulations to Tom Byrne.
Thank you, Susan Fahey, for those kind words. Susan, you were right. The biggest reaction was the ultimate frisbee. I think we're going to have to start an RTM team somewhere. It's an honor to have been nominated by a district chair who's passionate about her responsibility and who invests whatever time is required to anticipate potential problems, study the rules, and reach out for advice so that meetings are run in a manner that is proper and fair to all. Thank you, Susan, for all you do for District 11 and the RTM. And I want to thank you all sincerely for the privilege you bestow in allowing me to serve in this position. And I want to specially welcome the new members who are here for their first meeting tonight. We returning members look forward to your new perspectives and skills that you bring to the RTM, and we want you to feel perfectly comfortable reaching out with any questions you might have, such as, why does that man over in District Four keep yelling out "question"? More seriously, there is no question that we have important work to do. The first order of business is to meet with the RTM leadership to coordinate our approach to the important issues facing the RTM and the town. With the help of Alexis Vulgaris and Kimberly Jordan, we have reserved the evening of February 8th for a meeting with district and committee chairs. I will forward more details soon, but please note that date, February 8th. After that meeting of what I refer to informally as the moderators' committee, and after getting input from the district and committee leaders, I intend to appoint a special committee to make recommendations for change. I will also call upon the many interested and talented members who have contacted me to take a look at how technology can be used to enhance our work, including the RTM website, channel 79, GCTV, and email issues. Our work over the past two terms in this area was stalled by the lack of someone to take the reins of that initiative. I have made arrangements to have someone step into that role, and I'm confident the technology initiative will be productive this term. So let us be inspired by our shared love of the town without regard to party affiliation, and let us continue our rich tradition in this body of encouragement of full debate on the issue with respectful attention to speakers of differing viewpoints as we endeavor to lead this community as good or better than it was. Comes before us, election of a moderator pro temp. Donna Gadios Aziel of District 9.
Good evening. I rise tonight to nominate Alexis Vulgaris for moderator pro temp of the RTM. Ms. Vulgaris resides in Old Greenwich with her husband and two children, who both attend Greenwich High School. She is a current member of the Greenwich High School PTA and coordinates the Student Employment Service. Professionally, she is a licensed clinical social worker and worked as the Assistant Director for the American Red Cross of Greater New York. Ms. Vulgaris is an RTM member from District Six and has been a member of this body since 2006. I have had the personal pleasure of working with Mrs. Vulgaris for the past 12 years as a member of the Health and Human Service Committee. During this time, I have witnessed an extremely bright, focused individual who will drill down to important details in order to make the most appropriate decisions for this town. In 2012, Ms. Vulgaris was elected Chair of the Health and Human Service Committee, and her leadership and guidance were instrumental in asking for more accountability in departments and agencies that report to this committee. Under her leadership and guidance, she was able to clearly define what the expectations of the Health and Human Service Committee reports and presentations should contain. This direction resulted in more comprehensive information with clear metrics. Her administrative skills in directing meetings has always been of the highest quality, organized, courteous, and efficient. Her committee reports to this body have been comprehensive with other committee chairs, stating that they have nothing to add following her presentations. Ms. Vulgaris was a member of the Department of Human Service Technology Task Force in 2015. She also was a member of the Human Service Alice Work Group, which is responsible for assessing asset limited income constraints in employed populations of Greenwich. She also was a member of the Board of Selectmen's Education Section 66-67 Charter Revision Committee of 2017. Ms. Vulgaris has been a member since 2010 of the Community Development Advisory Committee and is the current chair. For those of you who don't know what this committee does, it's responsible for the distribution of approximately $700,000 of federal HUD money to local not-for-profits for capital projects and public service projects. As chair, she has been responsible for the logistic coordinations of the visits, the distribution of appropriate material, and the management of meetings for consensus of allocations. The moderator pro temp of the RTM has several responsibilities, one of which is to review all the Explan O materials submitted with all items of the call. They review the information and can request additional information from the proposer where appropriate. Another function the moderator pro temp is also responsible for standing in for the moderator in his absence or in circumstances which may pose a conflict of interest. Alexis Vulgaris has shown clearly her ability to undertake this position by her historical leadership of the different committees she has chaired, as well as her strong communication and organization skills. Fellow RTM members, I would strongly recommend that you vote for Ms. Alexis Vulgaris for moderator pro temp of the RTM. Thank you for your timing and consideration.
Thank you. Patty Roberts, District 5.
Good evening. Really, Donna said it all, so everything I say is just going to be secondary, but let me just go through. I've also had the privilege of working with Alexis for the last two years on both the Health and Human Service Committee, as well as the Community Development Block Grants Committee. Both committees have run like clockwork, with the information at the meetings being communicated well in advance, and the meetings were well organized. Both committees require members to reach out and research items such as the budget for the departments reporting to the Health and Human Services Committee, or to the nonprofits asking for money for their capital projects or to support for specific programs that serve the town of Greenwich. In each case, Alexis has had the committee members agree in advance on the list of questions to ask. In order that we streamlined the discussion and the evaluation of the budget we needed to approve, or to the projects and services requesting funding. This approach was particularly critical in evaluating the Community Development Block Grant last year, as we had over 20 different nonprofits to assess 25 different projects or services in a very short timeframe. Having a strong leader with excellent communication and management skills is critical, particularly for the Community Development Block Grant, as the committee struggles on how best to divide the money between the various agencies. Alexis's administrative skills set the stage for committee members to work together over two months to provide detailed reports on each project or service that they are providing, and that she provides us a framework that discusses how to divide it up in a time-efficient way on a fair basis. So, as Donna said, I urge you to vote for Alexis for pro temp, and I thank you for your time.
All right, further nominations for moderator pro temp? All right, it has been moved and seconded to close the nominations. I will therefore close the nominations, hearing no further. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number three? Place Alexis Vulgaris's name at the head of one of those columns, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are tallying that vote, it has been our tradition to have the district and committee chairs come up, introduce themselves, and the officers of their district or committee. So why don't we start with the districts? No particular order, but if you'd like to go in numerical order, that's a logical sequence. We'll take the districts, and then followed by the committees. So Dean Goss, Chair of District 1, will lead us off.
Good evening. We have an additional member in our district this term. We have 19. In September, when we made up the ballot, two of our then incumbent members opted not to run, and we were joined on the ballot with six petition candidates. The result of our voting was that all six of our petition candidates were elected, and we did lose three of our incumbents. But the only word of caution I would issue to all of the men in the room right now is that when our votes were counted, of our 10 top vote-getters, nine were women. Oh, oh. Hi. Carl Carlson is joining, remains as our chairman, and Judith Goss is our secretary.
Thank you very much. Next up?
Good evening. I'm Candace Garthwaite, District 6. I am the new Chair of District 6. Victoria Martin Young, raise her hand back there, is our vice chair, and our secretary remains Steve Metzgerth.
Good evening. Happy New Year to you all. My name is Willman Isidovic, District 2. Our vice chair is Catherine LeBabo, and our secretary is Jude Collins.
Tom Canilius, District Chair of District 3. Dawn Fortunato is our vice chair. Rosalyn Nacastro is our secretary. And as everybody knows, we're the tiniest group in the whole RTM. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob McKnight. I was elected Chair of District 4. Our vice chair, Tom Greco. Our secretary, Suma Kate.
Tom Broadhurst, Chair of District 5. Nancy Cooper, Vice Chair.
Good evening. I'm Wynne McDaniel. I'm Chair of District 7. Lucia Jansen is our vice chair, and Jill Cobbs is our secretary. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy New Year and congratulations. Josh Brown, Chair of District 8. Vice Chair is Carol Swift, and our secretary is Molly Salibi.
Not sure what happened to District 9, but Gerald Anderson, Chair of District 10. We have five new members, and we lost one seat. Alan Small is the vice chair, and Louisa Stone is the secretary. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Susan Fahey, Chair of District 11. Our vice chair is Dana Newman, and our secretary is David Oliver, and we have nine new members. Thank you.
For District 12, Miriam Menon is our secretary, Barbara Hinman, our vice chair, and Bob May, Chair.
District 9, and no, I wasn't lost. I am Betsy Fruman, and once again, I chair District 9, I guess until they're really sick of me. Our vice chair is Carol Zarelli, and our secretary is Jonathan Shankman.
Evening, everybody. I am Peter Berg from the Land Use Committee. We re-elected all three of our officers. Ellen Brennan Galvin is our secretary. Michael Carter is our vice chair.
For the Finance Committee, Rob Pirelli-Mannetti was voted as chair. Josh Brown, myself, is vice chair, and Lisa Seglem is the secretary from District 8. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Richard Newman. I'm chairman of Town Services. John Mistrakio from District 10 is my vice chairman, and Paul Homestead from District 5 is our secretary this year.
Rick Wellington, Vice Chair of Transportation. Our chair is Alan Small, and our secretary is Lucy von Brockel.
Hi, I'm Mike Spiloe, Vice Chair of Public Works. Our chair is Arlene Lamazo, who is left for sunnier climes in California, and our secretary is Jill Cobbs of District 7.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Eddy, and I'm going to try to leave a tribute to Mike Warner by referring to the Appointments Committee as your Appointments Committee from now on. Our vice chair is, once again, Stuart Ryder. Thank you. And the Appointments Committee has a secretary, finally, and that's Jude Collins from District 2. Thank you, Jude.
Hi, I'm Kim Blank from District 7, Chair of the Education Committee. Steve Meskers from District 6 is the vice chair, and Jennifer Freitag from District 8 is our secretary.
Hi, Lucia Jansen from District 7. I'm the Chair of the Budget Overview Committee. Dan Osizmer is the vice chair from District 5, and Bob Allen is our secretary from District 3. Thank you.
My name is Andy Chapin. I am the Chair of Parks and Rec. Our vice chair is Catherine LeBabo, and our secretary is Dean Gaminos.
Hi, Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of Health and Human Services, and I am delighted to say that we have Bill Galvin from District 7 as our vice chair, and we too have been without a secretary for a very long time, so Patty Roberts from District 5 is the lucky person that is our secretary. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Doug Wells. I was reelected to the Legislative Rules Committee. Kip Bergweger from District 8 is vice chairman again, and we have Margaret Freiberg as our secretary.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. I look forward to working with you in the new term, and as I said, we are hopeful to get together with you on February 8th, and more details on the time and place to come. I have the result of the vote of the election of our moderator pro tem. Congratulations Alexis Vulgaris, who received 197 votes. As many of you know from emails that have gone back and forth leading up to this meeting, Alexis really has been serving in that capacity for the last month, doing a wonderful job coordinating with the town clerk's office in setting everything up for the coming term. So Alexis, I thank you for all that hard work that you have already done. Look forward to working with you in the next two years. Thank you. All right, John Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and congratulations, once again.
Thank you.
And Ms. Pro Tem, congratulations. I'm here for a few moments to speak with you on behalf of your Appointments Committee about some specific opportunities for serving in the RTM. In addition to our standing committees, which are populated by representatives from all of our districts, there are some special committees and representatives of the RTM that are appointed from the membership according to specific skill sets and experience. These are the Claims Committee, the Labor Contracts Committee, and the RTM Representative to the Harbor Management Commission. I'd like to provide you with a little bit of an overview of each, and finish with an explanation of how the appointments process works for these, and how, if you're interested, you can become a candidate to serve on one of these bodies. First, the Claims Committee. The Claims Committee, working with the town attorney, has delegated the power invested in the RTM to approve appropriations of the Board of Estment and Taxation for the payment, compromise, or settlement of legal claims against the town. We're talking lawsuits here. Skill sets critical to the healthy functioning of the Claims Committee include, but are not limited to litigation, risk management, negotiation, general expertise, and insurance expertise. The Claims Committee has 10 regular voting members, one of whom is the moderator of the RTM, and two alternate members who serve in the absence of regular members but still participate to a very great degree. The committee meets as needed to discuss and decide by vote how to handle claims against the town. The next committee, special committee, is the Labor Contracts Committee. The role of the Labor Contracts Committee, also known as the LCC, is to inform and advise the RTM with respect to approving labor contracts for the police, firefighters, teachers, nurses, and other administrative and municipal worker unions in town. It does not itself negotiate contracts. It examines and analyzes each proposed labor contract that comes before the town, and it reviews town personnel policy and compensation practices, performance evaluations, incentive plans and awards, and employee classification plans. Works as a liaison to the town negotiator to communicate a sense of the RTM's inclination towards concession or rejection of significant proposals. Skill sets that this committee is looking for are labor relations, human resources, labor negotiations, mediation and conflict resolution, contract analysis, report writing, and explaining complex problems and solutions to decision-makers like us in the RTM. The Labor Contracts Committee has five regular voting members and two alternate members who serve in the absence of regular members, but again, are very involved in the work of the committee. Meeting times are determined by the labor contracts calendar, contingencies imposed by the arbitration and mediation process, and the RTM calendar. Lastly, the RTM appoints an RTM representative to the Harbor Management Commission. The Harbor Management Commission is the appointed agency in Greenwich responsible for preparing, maintaining, and implementing a harbor management plan in accordance with state statutes. In addition to the seven regular appointed members and two appointed alternate members, the commission membership includes 10 non-voting ex officio members, one of whom is appointed by the RTM to participate in its meetings, sorry about that, participation in its meetings, and to report back to the RTM on the commission's activities. The Harbor Management Plan, just as a little bit of background for you who are not aware, is broad in scope and addresses commercial, recreation, environmental, and historical aspects of the management of the town's harbors. Ideally, the RTM representative to this commission should have an interest and experience in marine-related matters. With respect to meetings, by town ordinance, there is at least one meeting of the Harbor Management Commission every three months. Instructions on how to submit your candidacy will be posted on the RTM website tomorrow. Nominations are made by the Appointments Committee through interviews with the Appointments Committee, and appointments are made by the RTM. The dates and times for interviews with the Appointments Committee will be subject to the approval of the RTM calendar tonight, but please bear in mind that candidates for all of these positions will have a deadline of Friday, January 26, at 12:00 noon, to submit their information to the chair of the Appointments Committee. Nominations for the Claims Committee will take place in time for appointments to be on the March RTM call, and nominations for the Harbor Management Commission rep and the Labor Contracts Committee will take place in time for these appointments to be on the April call. If you have any questions, please read the posting tomorrow, and then it's best to contact me via email if you have something you need to know. Thank you.
I'd like to express my thanks to John Eddy and the Appointments Committee with all that they have to do in organizing in the new term. They understand that the Claims Committee currently is short members. We do have carryover, but because some of the members did not return, we are short, and they have put this as a top priority to bring to us in March, so I appreciate giving priority to that matter. All right. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our December 11, 2017 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed corrections to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous consent. One final item before we get into the remaining call items tonight. It was a sad day this past Saturday, as our community suffered a monumental loss with the death of Lloyd Hull. Lloyd first joined the RTM in 1980, from District 10. As a lawyer with a practice in town, Lloyd was a well-respected legal mind, and served as chair of what was then called the Rules Committee, and he also served on the Claims Committee. I first came to know Lloyd personally when I joined the Claims Committee in 1990. I'm not sure how long Lloyd had been on that committee when I joined. Six years later, Lloyd encouraged me to run for moderator, after we learned that David Tobin was retiring from the RTM. I was forever grateful to Lloyd for the kindness he showed me at that time. Upon becoming moderator, I also became chair of the Claims Committee by rule, and Lloyd was elected the vice chair of the committee. So Lloyd and I served together on claims for 28 years, Lloyd for even longer, of course, and 22 of those as the officers of the committee. Until his recent illness, Lloyd never missed a committee meeting over the 22 years that he was on with me. And as with everything he did on the RTM, he always wore a jacket and tie to every meeting. Lloyd was a rock upon whom I could rely to be available if ever we needed to activate the emergency subcommittee provision for the Claims Committee, and to preside if ever I was unavailable for a meeting. Lloyd was an active defender of the town against all manner of claimants, and as any member of the Claims Committee could tell you, he was a very vocal and passionate advocate for the return of the doctrine of contributory negligence and assumption of the risk to Connecticut jurisprudence. This town conducts wonderful events on Memorial Day and Veterans Day that I've enjoyed attending over the years. I always saw Lloyd at those events, the ceremony at Indian Harbor in the early morning of Memorial Day, and the parade down Sound Beach Avenue later that morning, where Lloyd would ride in a classic convertible. I knew Lloyd was a veteran, but he never talked about his service. It wasn't until about seven years ago that I asked him, and he told me that he served on a destroyer during World War II, gave me the name of the ship, didn't say much more. Being a history lover, I went home, researched the ship, couldn't believe what I learned. I think most of us are familiar with that story. There is an oral history exhibit honoring his service currently at the Greenwich Library. His ship was known as the Ship That Wouldn't Die, hit by a German shell off the Normandy coast during the Normandy Invasion, transferred to the Pacific in time for the Battle of Leyte Gulf, Iwo Jima, and the Okinawa Campaign, where it was hit by four bombs and multiple kamikaze strikes, resulting in 32 killed, 71 wounded. Lloyd Hull was a great patriot, a man of the highest character. He loved his family, his country, and his town, and he would always ask about your family whenever he saw you. I've been married for almost 40 years, but every time I saw Lloyd, his first question would be, "How is your bride?", followed immediately by, "How is your daughter doing?", and then, "How is that great mother-in-law of yours?". When that great mother-in-law heard the sad news, she said, "He was such a handsome man." Some comments from members of the Claims Committee upon hearing the sad news. Lloyd was a man of character, a true and gracious gentleman of the old school we do not see often enough nowadays. This loss can only be described as monumental. I will miss his kindness and wonderful sense of humor. There are few people left like him. Those comments speak for all of us. Lloyd was a great mind, a great friend, a great patriot. We will miss him. And now Jerry Anderson of District 10, Chair of District 10.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, District 10 asks that you join us in honoring the memory of Lloyd Nelson Hull, who served the RTM as a member of District 10 for 38 years. Lloyd died January 13, 2018, at the age of 95. Lloyd moved to Greenwich in 1958, a town he loved, declaring he lived in the prettiest part of the world. After graduating from the University of Pennsylvania in 1943, Lloyd joined the Navy, and as you just heard, he served both in the European and Pacific theaters. He was part of the invasion of Normandy. After the war, Lloyd practiced law both in New York and in Greenwich. As a member of District 10, Lloyd served on many RTM committees, including Town Services, Appointments, and Public Works. In addition, as you've heard, his many contributions to District 10, Lloyd was for more than 28 years a member of the RTM Claims Committee, and was twice president of the Round Hill Association. Lloyd's gracious and thoughtful approach, along with his quick wit, will be greatly missed. Mr. Moderator, we ask that this tribute to Lloyd Nelson Hull be included in the minutes of this meeting, and that official copy be sent to his wife and his children. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the members please rise for a moment of silence in memory of Lloyd Hull? All right, that now brings us to the remaining items of the call. I informed our district and committee chairs that based upon the input I received, I would recommend the following organization. The only item for the consent calendar would be item 17. We can combine, for voting purposes, the resolutions relating to staggering the terms of the boards and commissions. Those are items 7 through 15, which would leave to take up separately the remaining items 4 through 6, 16 and 18. So, is there, well, so at this point, I will designate item 17 to be placed on our consent calendar, and if it remains there, and for our new members, if there is an objection to placing an item on a consent calendar, which means we hear no committee reports, and we have no discussion on the item, all that you hear is a description of the resolution, if there is an objection that is supported by a total of 20 other, by a total of 20 members, it would be taken off the consent calendar. So at this point, I will designate item 17, which is a resolution appropriating $53,017 with respect to costs incurred in the November municipal election. Is there any objection to that resolution being placed on our consent calendar? Hearing none. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar, item number 17, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. It requires a motion to suspend the rules to take one vote on multiple items, and the recommendation is to combine items 7 through 15 for voting purposes. When we combine the items, we do take them up one at a time. We will get committee reports. There can be discussion. If there is some need to separate one out from the combined items, we can do that. But at this time, is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine items 7 through 15 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. That motion is not itself debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining items 7 through 15 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. So we will now take the first of those items up. That is item number 7. Mr. Eddy, are you going to present these items? These are coming from our Appointments Committee. John Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the resolution, item number 7. Whereas the Appointments Committee seeks to responsibly perform its duty to nominate qualified and competent members to the condemnation commission, and whereas it is necessary for members of the nominating body to fully and confidently understand the responsibility -- members of the nominating body to fully and confidently understand the responsibilities and obligations conferred upon members of the Condemnation Commission by the Town Municipal Code in order to perform this duty, and whereas the responsibilities-
Mr. Eddy?
Yes.
You can just generally summarize this.
Oh, sure. Yeah, okay. I'm happy to do that. So the purpose of this resolution is to give the Appointments Committee the information it needs to responsibly appoint members to the, nominate members to the Condemnation Commission. If you take a look at, if you take a look at the code as it stands right now, there are sections of code that refer duties and responsibilities-
Just describe, not the reason for it, but just, this is a resolution to establish a special committee to spell out the duties of the Condemnation Commission.
Okay. This is a, I think you said it pretty well, Mr. Moderator.
That's all, that's all we need.
It's a challenge for me, but you did well, so, thank you.
All right. That coming from one of our committees, it does not require a second. May we have the Committee Reports on this? Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
We took up this item last Monday evening. John Eddy, Chair of the Appointments Committee, presented the item. As he just indicated, the RTM nominates and appoints members of the Condemnation Commission. He and his Committee believe there needs to be a better definition of exactly what their scope of activities is. We noted that the resolution should in fact be referred to as a special committee rather than a Subcommittee, and we made that change in the, in the resolution. There were also some scrivener's errors that were identified, and the corrections were approved by our Committee. Those corrections were marked on an appendix that went out with the report, sent all District Members through the Legislative and Rules Committee Members, as well as on the website. So at the appropriate time, I'd like to make that as part of our record. Our vote, as revised, was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Evening, Mr. Moderator. We had John Eddy with us at the, at the Land Use Committee meeting last Monday night. He explained that there is no clear description of the responsibilities of the Condemnation Commission, and the Appointments Committee is reluctant to nominate candidates without a clear understanding of the Commission. And he proposed creating a Subcommittee, as you just heard, to research the Commission and report back. One of our members asked if the Commission condemns private property for any purpose, or is it just public property for sewers and roads? One of our new members, Jude Collins, from District 2, who is a member of the Condemnation Commission, explained that the, that we can condemn private property, but the Commission does not condemn, it only decides whether a property that has been condemned, whether it's, how much the compensation should be. And we mentioned a few properties in the past that have either been condemned or perhaps were acquired through some threat of condemnation. Most recently, 284 Sound Beach Avenue, Judy's Nails by the Police Department, the Rotary in front of the Parat Library apparently is proposed. So our vote on this item was 12-0-0 to form the Subcommittee.
Thank you. Michael Spilow with Vice Chair of our Public Works Committee.
We were unclear on the role of the Condemnation Commission, and so we voted 11-0-0 on this item, District 2 absent.
Thank you.
So our Committee made some changes to the document so as not to have to go through these orally. These were included in an appendix that was attached to our report, and we'd asked the RTM to adopt those changes made by our Legislative and Rules Committee.
All right. So this is a motion to amend Item 7. The, as Mr. Wells said, it was attached to the Committee Report. If there is any request to go through each of those, we will, but we can adopt the motion to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any desire to go through each of those individual changes? All right. Is there any objection to the motion to amend? Hearing none. That motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Further discussion on Item 7? All right. Item 8 now comes before us.
Mr. Moderator, I'll give a general explanation of all of these?
Yeah, just what board is involved to stagger the terms.
We have a merciful moderator. So these, these resolutions that are before us are a continuation of what the RTM started in September, looking to accomplish three things with respect to term expirations for the agency that are appointed by the RTM. One is to stagger them throughout the year, right now, or previous to the initial resolutions that have already been adopted. All of the appointments in, that are made by the RTM expired on March 31st, and there are between 125 and 130 of those. It created a significant problem in terms of managing it. So these are being staggered, moved from March 30th, 31st, to March 31st, June 30th, and October 31st. In addition, on those agencies who had a number of term expirations in a single year where they could be more easily spread out to provide continuity for business in those agencies, we added some one-time interim terms so that in these agencies, you'd have an even expiration of terms over the course of a number of years. The third thing we did was we assigned a unique designation to each position so that in the administration of these, the nominating and the appointing process, we'd have a much better idea of who we were talking about when an appointment came before the RTM. So again, these were all administrative issues that we're seeking to make in order to make the process easier to manage for the RTM, for the Board of Selectmen, and for record-keeping in the future.
All right. So since I think many of our Committees took these up together, this would be 8 through, for the staggering, is it 8 through 14?
8 through 14 and 15 is the, the schedule of unique designations, so.
All right. So could you just, so you'll offer all of those right now?
Yeah.
Could you just say Item 8 is for Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, 9 is for, etc.?
Yeah. Item 7, Item 8 is for the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Item 9 is for the Condemnation Commission, but we have a slightly amended resolution there, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. We'll take those up.
Okay, great.
Let's just get them in front of us.
Okay. Item 10 is for the Board of Parks and Recreation, 11 for the Planning and Zoning Commission, 12 for the Board of the Nathaniel Witherall, 13 for the Board of Health, 14 for the Department of Human Services, and 15 is the schedule of unique designations.
All right. And that, again, being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee does not require a second. So Items 8 through 15 are now before us. May we have the reports of the Committees? Mr. Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Eddy met with us last Monday evening. We went through Items 8 through 15 with him. These were similar to the resolutions that we passed in the previous term. These are all related to the Charter, however, as opposed to our rules. That's why they came to us in a separate block this term. Our focus in our Committee was to simply look at the language. We noted some scrivener's errors in Items 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 14, and we made those changes, all of which were unanimously approved by our Committee. And again, those were made part of an, of an appendix that was attached to the report that's been transmitted to the, to the RTM. And so at the appropriate time, I would ask that those be accepted by the RTM.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee Report.
So Land Use took up Item 8, 11, and 15. We had John Eddy with us again last Monday night. Our vote on all three items was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Michael Spilow with the Public Works Committee Report.
We took up call item number 9, and we voted 11-0-0 with District 2 absent.
Thank you. Andy Chapin with the Parks and Recreation Committee Report.
We took up Item 10. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Ms. Vulgaris?
We took up, we started with 12. Did anyone start with 11? No? I guess not. So we took up Items 12, 13, and 14. Would you like me to read them all at once?
You may do.
Okay. So our, piggybacking on what Mr. Eddy said, it was really just to smooth out the workload and maintain institutional knowledge. So our vote on Item 12, which is the Board of Nathaniel Witherall, was 11-0-1. The District 7 alternate member abstained because she felt she did not have enough information to make a decision. Number 13, Health, it's Health Nursing Home Administration, our vote was 12-0-0. And then 14, Department of Human Services, our vote was 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, we move to amend Items 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 14 according to the language that is submitted in the appendix to the RTM. Our vote on the resolutions as revised was 12-0-0.
All right. Again, that motion to amend offered on behalf of one of our Committees, it does not require a second. Is there any request to go over those proposed changes that were in the appendix? Is there any objection to that motion to amend? Hearing none. The motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Further discussion on Items 8 through 15? That man in District 4? All right. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, combine calendar Items 7 through 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. I have the result of the vote on Item 17, the appropriation for the November election. Those in favor, 200; opposed, 0; abstaining, 0. That item has carried. All right. The first of the separate items now comes before us. That is, Mr. Wells, would you please offer Item Number 4? Thank you.
Resolve that the regular meeting dates for the 2018-2019 RTM term shall be set forth below, and those dates shall preempt any provisions of the RTM rules that may be in conflict for the 2018-2019 term only. The dates are as they appear in the call.
Thank you. This, this is informally known as the Mastrocchio Resolution. I will give credit to John Mastrocchio of District 10 for suggesting, when we have had conflicts that come up during the term, John quite correctly said, "Why don't we take care of that at the first meeting of the new term?". So I thank you for that. I think it's worked very well. Okay. So any Committee that would like to report on this, why don't we come up and, and run through the reports? Mr. Wells with the Legislative and Rules Committee Report.
Last Monday evening, we took up Item 4. Mr. Byrne appeared at our meeting and explained that there are two dates in 2018 that conflict with other matters. The April 9th, 2018 meeting occurs during the public school vacation. Mr. Byrne explained further that it would be possible to move the RTM meeting date to April 16 while keeping the Committee and District meetings two weeks prior to that date. Our Committee moved therefore to change the April 2018 RTM meeting date from April 9 to April 16. Our vote was 12-0-0. The other conflicted date is September 17. However, our Committee chose not to make a motion with respect to that date, wanting to hear from the Districts on that, on that item.
Thank you. Kim Blank, Chair of Education.
Hi, yes. Education took this up. We first voted on a motion to amend Item 4 to move the April meeting date to April 16, and that motion passed 11-0-0. We then did take up the issue of the September meeting date. In September, Rosh Hashanah occurs on September 10th and September 11th, and those are the Monday and Tuesday when Committee meetings would normally be held. The week before this is Labor Day, so Monday night, when Monday night Committees could meet if they met the week before, is also a conflict. But we did propose a sense of the meeting resolution, which we voted on and passed 11-0-0, and the motion is as follows. It is the sense of the meeting that the RTM Committee meetings for the September meetings should be held on Tuesday, September 4th, and Wednesday, September 5th. Committees that typically meet on Mondays should meet on Tuesdays, and Committees that typically meet on Tuesdays should meet on Wednesday, September 5th. District meetings should be held as scheduled on Wednesday, September 12th, and Thursday, September 13th. So the solution we're proposing is that it would actually be sort of three weeks in a row. The Monday Committees would meet on Tuesday, September 4th, the day after Labor Day. The Tuesday Committees would meet on the following day. The following week, Districts would meet on Wednesday and Thursday, and then we would have the Monday Committee meeting, the Monday full RTM meeting. And that motion passed 11-0-0 with District 12 absent.
Thank you very much. We'll take up the motion to amend this resolution, and then I'll come to you for the sense of the meeting resolution. Michael Spilow with the Public Works Committee Report.
So we took up this item and discussed the changes proposed by the Moderator and voted on the item as amended only, 11-0-0. So the, the changes proposed were the April 9th to April 16th change, and the September 17th change to the 4th and 5th.
Thank you. Josh Brown with the Finance Committee Report.
Finance Committee took up this item and agreed with the previous speakers, 11-0-0 to make those amendments.
Thank you. And incidentally, anticipating that we might move that Monday and Tuesday Committee meetings to the prior week, Alexis Vulgaris, along with Kimberly Jordan, made all those arrangements, so we are ready to do that.
Great. So we have basically the same outcome as the Education Committee proposed. We voted 12-0-0 to amend the calendar to change the April date, and then we also have a sense of the meeting resolution, but you've already offered that, so our vote was 12-0-0 with that as well.
Who's next? Rick Wellington, Town Services.
Transportation.
Oh, Transportation.
Transportation considered Item 4, the meeting dates for 2018-19. After a discussion in the Moderator's January 6 memorandum, the Committee voted to change the April 9th meeting day to Monday, April 16th. The vote was 11-0-0 with District 10 absent. A second vote to approve the meeting schedule as amended was approved, 11-0-0.
Thank you. Andy Chapin with Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec took up the issue and voted 12-0-0 to amend it as suggested by the Moderator. That was moving the April RTM meeting back one week and moving the Committee meetings, that was the April meeting, and then in September, moving the Committee meetings to the prior Tuesday and Wednesday.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
A BOC motion was made and seconded to accept the Moderator's RTM calendar changes in April 2018. With the change, the BOC vote is 11-0-0. District 2 is absent. I'll go ahead and mention the SOMAR that is, we thought the Finance Committee was going to propose, but we're fine with education, and we accept it. We made a motion and seconded to accept the Finance Committee SOMAR that's expected or education with the new RTM Committee schedule changes in September. The BOC vote was 11-0-0. District 2 absent.
All right. Thank you very much. Kim Blank, why don't you first give us a motion to amend Item 4, and then we'll vote on that, and then we'll take up the sense of the meeting resolution.
Okay. So the motion is to amend Item 4 to hold the RTM meeting on April 16 instead of April 9, 2018.
All right. Is there any objection to that motion to amend? Hearing none. It is adopted upon unanimous consent. So I will now ask the District Chairs to please mark your voting cards, Item 4 as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting on Item 4, we will now take up this sense of the meeting resolution.
Okay. So the resolution reads as follows. It is the sense of the meeting that RTM Committee meetings for the September meetings should be held Tuesday, September 4th, and Wednesday, September 5th, 2018. Committees that typically meet on Mondays should meet on Tuesday, September 4th, and Committees that typically meet on Tuesdays should meet on Wednesday, September 5th. District meetings should be held as scheduled on Wednesday, September 12th, and Thursday, September 13th.
Thank you. Again, this being offered on behalf of one of our- Again, this being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on this sense of the meeting resolution. This, I asked for this because I don't unilaterally want to change something where we don't have a consensus. I know Mr. Wells takes long summer vacations and may not be back the day after Labor Day, so any discussion on this proposed change?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Eddy.
Before I suggested change, I was wondering if we're moving Mondays to Tuesdays and Tuesdays to Wednesdays. Would it be easier just to move Mondays to Wednesdays and leave Tuesdays as they are? I already have meetings scheduled.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The proposal suggests that we move the Monday meeting to Tuesday and the Tuesday to Wednesday.
Yeah.
If we move the Monday to the Wednesday and leave Tuesday the way it is, it might be easier.
No, Mr. Eddy. That's not the motion.
No, no, I'm suggesting, my...
We're going Monday meetings first, Tuesday meetings second.
Okay. I was suggesting that we amend that motion, but if it seems to make sense, but...
You can move to amend it if you like.
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right. Is there any objection to this sense of the meeting resolution? All right. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of moving the Monday and Tuesday committee meetings in September to the 4th and the 5th of September, with the Monday going to Tuesday and Tuesday going to Wednesday, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That sense of the meeting resolution has carried. Thank you very much. All right. Item five now comes before us. Who do we have presenting this? From our Assistant Town Attorney, Valerie Mays Keeney.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Item five is a resolution to update and finesse the language of Sections 62 and 63 of the Charter, which relate to the Department of Human Services. This is in follow-up to a related amendment last year when the name of the department was changed.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Dr. Allen Barry, Commissioner of the Department of Human Services, and Ms. Valerie Keeney, the Law Department, presented this item to us. In March of 2017, the town amended the Charter of the Town of Greenwich Municipal Code to reflect the name change of the department now known as the Department of Human Services. At that time, the focus was on changing the name of the department and not changing or amending substantive parts of the Charter related to the department. Last year, Health and Human Services noted that some of the language used in the Charter was outdated and should be changed. The Commissioner and the Board Chair, Barbara Nolan, at that time, agreed and stated that they would come back before the RTM with the appropriate changes. Those additional changes are what we have before us now. So, the three key components to this item are: the first is the proposed amendments to Section 62 and 63 of the Charter are intended to update the language describing the duties of the Department of Human Services. Words such as unwed mother, intoxicating liquors have been removed and updated. Two, the term "human services" is defined in the proposed amendments to Section 62. And three, the virtue of the proposed amendments of the Board of Human Services would have the power to appoint an acting Commissioner of Human Services and a Deputy Commissioner of Human Services. Our vote on this item was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Report of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
I, for one, will miss that intoxicating liquors language, but Valerie Keeney, the Law Department, presented this item to our committee last Monday, and I will not go through our report because Ms. Vulgaris covered the ground pretty carefully. What we did notice at our committee was we just passed item 14, which is Section 62 of the Charter, in the language change that was made by Mr. Eddy's Appointments Committee regarding the membership of that committee and the staggered dates for appointments. Our committee was concerned that if we now pass this resolution, we will be undoing what Mr. Eddy just did and what we just voted on, because that language is not in this resolution that Mr. Eddy's committee put forth. So, after some extensive discussion, it was suggested that this item should be postponed to the next RTM meeting where the proponents of this item five can bring it back, which incorporates the language that we just passed in item 14, and bring it up at that point. On our motion to postpone item five, the vote was 12-0-0.
All right. Thank you. Why don't you offer that motion?
On behalf of Legislative and Rules Committee, we move to postpone item five to the March RTM meeting.
All right. Thank you. Discussion on the motion to postpone item five? I can, I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing item five to our March meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Item six now comes before us. Al Kava, Director of Labor Relations.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, good evening. Item six, resolve at the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich, hereby rejects the arbitration award dated December 22, 2017, between the Town of Greenwich and Teamsters Local 456, covering the period July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item six has been moved and seconded. David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, on 5 January, your Labor Contracts Committee met to consider the arbitration award rendered in the arbitration between the Town of Greenwich and Teamsters Local 456. An award was rendered this past December, late in the month. We had four of the five members in attendance because our fifth member got trapped out of town by the snowstorm of the previous day. This motion is set up as a motion to reject the award because the statute is worded in such a manner that if we don't reject it within a certain time period after the award is issued, it automatically goes into force. In any event, since a number, quite a few of you were not members of the RTM in the last term, let me give you some background on this, because this actually started out in the previous term, actually in the first year of the previous term. In late 2016, the town and the Teamsters, their Greenwich might even have higher priorities than some of those other clauses, or what it might be that the town has to concede or pay in order to get Greenwich unions to agree to those clauses to come into Greenwich labor contracts. On the other hand, the LCC, as it has for decades, has continued to measure the reasonableness of GWI by what is the MIRA average within the state of Connecticut for the general wage increase. In addition, the LCC has not been convinced of the wisdom of trying to achieve budgetary goals in labor negotiations, in large part because the union reps negotiate to get the maximum benefit for their members, and do not care, to any significant degree, about what is the budgetary impact of their demands on our budget, unless they think the town is going bankrupt and there might be a staff cuts, but Greenwich isn't going bankrupt. Moreover, the LCC has been skeptical that the budgetary process and the labor negotiation process can be synchronized, since the budget process is a glacial eight-to-nine-month process from the fall to the spring, while the labor negotiations are in fact being undertaken in real time, all the time. For example, the current funding for the contract resulting from this arbitration, and the funding for the Launa and Nurses' contracts, which are likely to come in the next few months, have already been approved by this body when we approved the budget in May of 2017 for this current 2017-2018 year. Finally, it's clear that the LCC gives greater deference to the strategic considerations of the town negotiator, who clearly knows more than anybody in this room about what the town needs to achieve in negotiations, what is achievable in negotiations, and how much it's going to cost the town to get to those results. In any event, after the RTM at its December 2016 meeting decided to follow the recommendation of the BOC, the contract was rejected, and the issues in dispute went to arbitration. And that arbitration then began in 2017. The RTM's rejection did, at least for a while, create the risk that the Teamsters and the other unions who had not already joined the state insurance pool wouldn't go into the pool, and that their going into the pool would become a subject of, for example, this particular arbitration. If that had been the case, then we wouldn't have enjoyed the insurance premium savings that we've enjoyed over the last half-year. But the fact is that we were able to avoid that risk because the town negotiator negotiated interim agreements for all those unions to go into the pool, even though we didn't have a collective bargaining, a new collective bargaining agreement with them, although there is in fact one union that still has not gone into the insurance pool. The award by the arbitral panel was rendered 22 December 2017, in other words, just before this last Christmas, which means, as you calculate the time, that if this body takes no action today to reject this award by a two-thirds vote, then the award and the con- commitment contract will automatically enter into force. Essentially, I have to say, when you look at what we offered in the, what the town and the union offered in the arbitration as their last best offers, the town, the union came out as the financial winner. Thus, the arbitral decision granted the union a 2.25% GWI, in other words, what had been negotiated in the contract, for each of the first two years. We had, in fact, made a last best offer in those two years of 1.5%. The union, the arbitrators did not accept that. However, in the third year, the arbitral panel awarded the town the 1.5% increase of its last best offer. In addition, because the RTM rejected the tentative agreement, the town was able to back off, or renege, if you will, on its offer to increase the 401K contribution maximum, even though the town had previously agreed to it. And in fact, the panel ruled for the town on this particular issue. Unfortunately, the savings from the denial of that increase are not frankly that significant. There was also a two allowance issue, which the town also won, which also has no material impact on the cost of contract. When the members of the Labor Contracts Committee met on 5 January, there was fairly general agreement, fairly quickly, that the committee should recommend to the RTM that it not reject the arbitration award. But there were widely divergent views within the committee about why this course of action was appropriate. And these divergent views, I must say, reflect the different perspectives of the Labor Contracts Committee and most of the folks on, the BOC and most of the folks on the Labor Contract Committee. In any event, the two perspectives were fully aired in our Labor Contracts Committee meeting on 5 January. The one view expressed in the Labor Contracts Committee, which I would call the positive view, was that the RTM rejection of the contract and the ensuing arbitration should be considered a historic psychological and strategic victory for the town, even if the financial gain was relatively modest. And definitely because it is a positive gain psychologically, in terms of positioning the town, in terms of future labor negotiations and arbitration, definitely this award should not be rejected. And indeed, the town will use that 1.5% that we got in the last year and the savings plan match issue with other unions whose contracts will be negotiated in the next weeks, and that includes, as I say, the two Launas and the Nurses. I'm fairly confident that some of the other committee reports will give you even more details on this positive perspective of the arbitration award. There is, of course, the other perspective, which I would call the temperate view, which is basically we dodged a bullet to a certain degree, and the town probably did better in the arbitration than it deserved. From a financial point, in terms of what was proposed in the last best offers, as I mentioned, the town was the winner. Thus, of the $606,000 savings that we have, when one compares the projected cost of the tentative agreement and the projected cost now that we have the arbitration award, more than half of that $606,000 comes from the reduction in premiums that we're paying in the state insurance pool, which was not even a part of the arbitration. The result is that this total cost of contract for this particular three-year agreement is about $120 million. Our savings from the arbitration, when you exclude the health plan savings, amount to just about $280,000. Accordingly, I think the temperate view is that we got out of this award what we could, and we ought to run with it, and not take the dubious course of trying to get more on appeal, since the town's win on the year three GWI and the 401K contribution might be vulnerable on appeal. Some of us even wonder, did we really win the third year because of the strength of our arguments, or was it a typical arbitral response, which is split the baby, don't let one side or the other win all the points, don't let there be a skunking? Who knows? But that's where we are at this point. Let me just mention here what were the results of this arbitration to some degree, where we have to be thinking about what we're going to be doing going forward in the rest of this term, because these different perspectives, I think, are going to come up again as we have more contracts negotiated and even more arbitration awards. I think the first thing to recognize is that the town had pushed in the arbitration the arguments that the BOC had made in recommending rejection. They pushed those concepts, and the Chairman of the BOC even testified at, in the arbitration proceeding. We made one additional argument over and above those, and that was that the budget crisis that had arisen after the RTM had rejected the contract, you know, the whole chaos that took place in Hartford, could in fact have an adverse fiscal impact upon the Town of Greenwich, if in fact state funding that was supposed to be coming didn't show up, or if in fact the state insisted that the towns had to start helping contribute on the teachers' pension plan. Unfortunately, the arbitration panel did not adopt any of the arguments that the BOC had presented. There is definitely some language in terms of public interest, for example, but that probably is not terribly innovative, because public interest is one of the factors that the state statute says that arbitrators are always required to consider, and you often see it in briefs and opinions when an arbitration panel is seeking to justify its award. Secondly, the arbitration panel seems to have signaled that the Labor Contracts Committee was correct in analyzing the appropriateness of the agreed-upon GWI of 2.25% by the standard of the MIRA average, with the implication that future arbitration panels are also likely to use that standard in judging whether the union or the town has the more appropriate GWI. Third, although the panel did not address the question of whether negotiating labor contracts can... contracts can or should be a part of the whole budgetary process as it happens, what the town did say was that the town's fiscal condition, or adverse developments in the fiscal condition, can be taken into consideration, independent of the budgetary process, in analyzing the last best offers of the town and the union. Indeed, the town prevailed in regard to the third-year GWI and the maximum contribution to the 401K on this argument of adverse fiscal developments. Significantly, this is not the first time that the town has been able to successfully use adverse conditions to win on GWI. In fact, this is exactly the argument we used a number of years ago during the 2008 fiscal crisis. But let me say, I mean, this arbitration award, even for those few people with a temperate view, this is not a disaster for the town. Basically, when it comes to the cost of contract, when you compare it to what we had proposed and what we had agreed to in the tentative agreement, it's more or less a wash. $120 million, we saved $280,000, it's essentially a wash there. To be sure, the BOC arguments did not get picked up by the arbitral panel in justifying the award, but in fact, we did get reinstatement or reinforcement of the concept that if there are adverse fiscal conditions, then the town can assert those, and the arbitral panel should take them into consideration. One thing I should note is that the arbitral panel pointed out that it generally gives deference to tentative agreements that have already been agreed, even if they have been rejected. The fact of the matter is, the town of Greenwich regularly goes into arbitration. But what it usually does is it arbitrates before a tentative agreement is reached, in the course of the negotiating process. As a result, the RTM often doesn't know that an arbitration is even going on. But precisely because we do it before the tentative agreement is rejected, this deference of the arbitral panel to a tentative agreement that has already been established doesn't come in, doesn't come into play. In any event, as you can see, when you take these positive and temperate viewpoints, they dovetail into both perspectives agreeing that essentially we should not reject this particular arbitration award. Indeed, in our meeting, although the BOC had previously voted to recommend an affirmative vote to reject the motion to reject, in our LLC meeting, the chairman of the BOC, who is also a member of the Labor Contracts Committee, offered the view that it was better to vote to postpone consideration of this, of this item six, just simply in order to show that the town was still unhappy with some aspects of the award and the ensuing contract. Two other members of the committee, including myself, were frankly indifferent on the matter of whether we affirmatively rejected the motion or we just simply moved to postpone it. And we were willing to go along with a motion to postpone if some people thought that the town might get some tactical advantage out of postponement. The fourth member was of the view that if we were sufficiently satisfied with the award so as not to oppose it, we ought to vote affirmatively to reject the motion to reject. In any event, as you can see, all four members of the committee in attendance agreed that it was not appropriate to reject the award, and all four of the opinion that it should be recommended that the award not be rejected. Accordingly, the committee voted three to one to move to postpone, sign a day E, consideration of item six on the call. And if we do that, if we postpone consideration of this motion indefinitely this evening, then it will automatically go into force. And I will make that motion at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, if somebody else does from another committee doesn't beat me to it.
Thank you. All right. Andy Chape, Parks and Rec report.
Okay, here's the Parks and Rec point of view. The health insurance was good, we saved money there. We won some of the side issues, we lost a couple, all in all, pretty good. The real money was in the wages. The union got what it wanted the first two years, we got what we wanted the third year. We had Al Kava there, we had David Dutchen, we talked about this a lot. What we, what we came around to is that, you know, we believe that the arbiter thought we made a good point with regard to the states in fiscal trouble, and we're not going to get as much help as we want in the future. But at the end of the day, for the first two years, since the town already budgeted the wage increase in there, we demonstrated the ability to pay for it, and we were unlikely to do any better on any further arbitration. So we do not want to reject the proposal as it is and send out to arbitration again. We had heard that other committees had taken up the idea of postponing it indefinitely. We voted on that first, and the vote was six for, six against, so that failed. Those against felt we should just accept the current deal and move on. We then took up the deal, the item as it was written in the call, and we voted 12, zero, I mean, zero, 12, zero, to reject the rejection and move on.
Thank you. Kim Blank with the Education Committee report.
I'll try to be brief and not rehash what's been said by the other speakers. The general sentiment of the committee after hearing the presentation from Mr. Kava was that we should not reject this, because we should not submit this award for binding review by another arbitration panel, that, you know, we should be happy with it is as it is. But we then spent our time discussing the relative merits of voting no on item six, so explicitly deciding to not reject the award versus moving to postpone item six indefinitely. By postponing item six indefinitely, the award would be allowed to take effect after 25 days, but we felt the RTM would not need to put its imprimatur on an award that ruled against the town in two years of GWIs. So we made a, someone made a motion to postpone item six indefinitely, and that motion carried unanimously, 11-0-0, with District 12 absent, and we did not then take up a vote on item six as presented in the call.
Thank you. Josh Brown with the Finance Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Finance Committee met last Monday, and much was covered that prior speakers covered, so I'm not going to rehash all of that. Our vote was to postpone this item indefinitely. Motion was duly made and seconded, with 11-0-0 was the vote on that, so at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Michael Spilo with the Public Works Committee report.
Public Works took up this item, and Mr. Kava presented the various options. Again, I won't belabor them. There was motion made and seconded to postpone this item indefinitely. I think the general feeling was that while the gains we made were good, they're insufficient, and we didn't want to endorse them. The vote on the motion to postpone was 10-1-0, with District 2 absent, and District 1 opposed being uncomfortable with a motion to postpone as being not, well, I'm not sure what the level of comfort was. And we did not, we did not vote on the item itself.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen with the Budget Overview Committee report.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee took up this item. As the chairman of the Labor Contract Committee mentioned, the BOC committee spearheaded the rejection of the Teamster contract. The RTM's rejection of the Teamster contract made history. Since never before had the RTM rejected a labor contract proposed by the town to the Given the impact of these labor contracts on the town operating budget and the potential crowding out of services, the BOC had conducted extensive research on this contract, including the tedious task of reading other Fairfield County town labor contracts, researching wage information from the public databases, such as the Connecticut Department of Labor, as well as the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities database. We also called town HR directors. Before determining, the Teamster workers were going into the contract as far higher-paid in wages and some benefits, namely the 401K supplemental, higher paid than their peer group in Fairfield County. Very shortly, we will be hearing from the BET Subcommittee with the Nathaniel Witherall report. It is interesting to note that Nathaniel Witherall, the Teamsters are Nathaniel Witherall employees, are 100 full-time Teamsters and 78 part-time. And they also concluded they're far outpacing wages and benefits to their peer skilled nursing As validation to the quality of the BOC's data, the town's five legal briefs, and I encourage you to read them, to the state arbitration panel quote throughout the BOC's sourced and footnoted data findings. And what an amazingly wonderful outcome this arbitration panel had for this town. Yes, it sounds as if minimal, for some, $600,000 may not be a lot. For others, it is not only a financial win, it is a psychological win that a wealthy town like Greenwich proved to a state arbitration panel that public interest, we had the BOC committee, the Finance Committee, and later the RTM, our 48 square miles of town residents from Chickahominy to Old Greenwich, said the contract was too high. It's far outpacing inflation, it's far outpacing private sector growth, and the level of spending needs to be tempered. The wage growth also has a lifetime impact. Let me remind you, defined benefit plans, of which many of those Teamster employees still participate, have lifetime payouts. So it is not just $600,000 of the current year, it's lifetime. The BOC hopes to see future contracts reflect our current economic reality. Our governor in our own state is aligning the budget message with the labor contracts. They are inextricably tied. To say that there is no connection between labor contracts and budget is simply not in economic reality. The BOC vote was 12-0-0 to postpone, excuse me, 11-0-0 to postpone indefinitely. As reflected in the other RTM committee reports, the BOC did not want to accept and go on record as accepting the contract, since we did lose two out of the three wage increases. Also, we hope that by not accepting, the labor negotiator can, who is currently underway with other contracts, can use this as a message that the public interests would like to see reform. Thank you.
As chairman of the Labor Contracts Committee, I move on behalf of the Labor Contracts Committee that consideration of item six of the call be postponed indefinitely.
All right, that being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second discussion on the motion to postpone item six indefinitely. All right, the motion to postpone indefinitely, in essence, is a motion to kill an item without taking a vote on the merits of the item. It effectively switches yes and no votes. If you were in favor of the resolution, you would want to vote no on a motion to postpone indefinitely. It requires a majority to pass. I will call for a record vote on this. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Labor Contracts Committee motion to postpone item six indefinitely. If you are in favor of killing this item without taking a vote on the merits, you should vote yes. If you want to take up the language of the resolution and vote on that, you should vote no. So I ask that our district chairs please pull your delegation. I do have the results of the two pending vote tallies, the combined items seven through 15. Those in favor, 201, opposed zero, abstaining zero. The combined items have carried. Item four, which was our schedule as amended, those in favor, 199, opposed one, abstaining zero. So please note the change in our April meeting date, and we will also reschedule that, the committee's in September of this year. All right, we have two, two more items to consider. Item 16 now comes before us. David Rudolph, are you here? David Rudolph. Proponent of an item that had more than enough signatures to come before us.
Hi. Just to be the resolution?
Yes, go ahead.
Resolve that the following proposed RTM rule, use of town email addresses by all RTM members for official town business, be adopted by the RTM.
All right, and this is the same as it appears on the call, correct?
Correct, although there are amendments.
All right, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 16 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the Legislative and Rules Committee? Mr. Wells.
Mr. Moderator, we took up this item last Monday evening. David Rudolph presented the item to us. The purpose is, of this resolution is to get the RTM members to comply with town policy on the use of emails for town business. Mr. Rudolph explained that if you use your private email for town business, anyone can use the freedom of information to access your emails. The town system allows using a shared folder to a committee or district instead of sending attachments to all involved. All applicable information can be stored in a central location on a town-monitored site. There followed a discussion regarding how to respond to an email sent to a member's home email address by cc-ing the member's town address or using record@grenwichct.org. There were questions concerning the cost of this. We were advised that the cost per account is $40. If you multiply that by the 230 members, that comes out to a number of $9,200. Our committee and the guests then discussed to what extent FOI applied to individual communications among members. One should assume that there's no privacy connected with any town email address when communicating about town business. This item on the call appears in two version, which are, versions which are formatted differently. The first format allows, follows the outlining format used in the RTM rules, while the second version uses an outline that the author thought was a bit clearer. The R, Phil and our committee elected to delete the second version and to vote on the first. Our motion to approve the item as revised by deleting the second version was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Other committees or districts that took this up? Town Services, I believe, took it up. Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members. Town Services took up item 16 as we oversee their budget. This is a rule change to the RTM, requiring RTM members' use of a town email system, or I should say, a town email account. We invited Tom Klein, the Director of Information Technology, to discuss the item, and we looked at both the reasons for this item and the cost to implement it. My question is, are we ready to spend what we calculated as 30? My question is, are we ready to spend what we calculated as $33,000 to set up email accounts? So yes, it was just mentioned, the license fees. There are 230 members of the RTM, currently 52 have town email accounts. The license fee per account is $40, or currently $2,100 for the RTM. If we all have accounts, the yearly fee jumps to $9,300. The total cost of emails to the town will go up 20%. I wrote a little joke here. Lucia, can you help me with this? We also looked at the time costs of the help desk, so we have to think about that. From their experience, the help desk estimates that it takes an average of two hours to fully onboard a new email account. That includes getting the account set up and training the person how to use it. By the way, that only happens eight to five, Monday to Friday. You can't ask on an evening, you can't ask on a weekend for help or to get this set up. If 178 new accounts need to be set up, that's 356 work hours. That's equivalent to two and a half months of an IT employee. Do it at $47 an hour. Again, that's $33,000 so we all can have email accounts. It was suggested to me a month or two ago that to avoid having the problem of freedom information, looking into my personal email accounts, it took me five minutes to go to Gmail. I set up richardnewmanrtm@gmail.com. Gmail told me how to put it on my iPhone, how to put it on my iPad. Cost me nothing. Took five minutes. I'm sure our soon-to-be-formed technology, RTM Technology Committee could probably set up a meeting and help us all do that. So the other part of this was, they said that if we implement the requirement to have all RTM members, or if we implement the requirement to have all RTM members' accounts set up by 30 days after the March meeting, as it says in the rule, it would actually become a biannual fall, full-time project of the IT department. Again, putting many important projects that they work on on hold. The help desk workers are also our project managers, so if they need to spend time on the help desk, they can't work on their other projects. They're putting in a new voice-over Internet Protocol phone system right now. They're working on cybersecurity fortification, new traffic light network, and network upgrades, and disaster recovery. So our question to you is, what is the mandatory town email solving? RTM Communications has been working smoothly with members deciding whether they use a personal email account or the town's. Section B, or 2B and C of the rule itself, and the handout tonight spell out what Tom Klein showed us back in 2016, that the email policy, all you have to do to be in compliance with the FOI, using a personal email account, is remember that if you're sending it to a town email address, anything you're sending, it's already in the system. If you're using your personal account to send it to other members, all you have to do is CC that message to record, R-E-C-O-R-D, at greenwichct.org. You are now in compliance. That's all you have to do from your personal email account. They don't need to come after you. We have had no incidents, by the way, of FOI coming after RTM members. So we also looked at a little problem that the IT department mentioned to us, which is that not every one of the members in the RTM has equipment that's able to use the town email system. So what are we going to do? Are we going to buy them a new item? Are we going to force them to upgrade to a new iPhone X? I'm not sure how exactly we're going to handle that. So Town Services voted 12-0-0 to refer this item back for further review to Legislative and Rules. We would have liked to refer it to a town, the RTM Technology Committee, which doesn't exist yet. But our hope, so we're going to send it back to Legislative and Rules. Our hope is that when it does come back to us, it will be within a technology handbook of the RTM created by the soon-to-be-formed RTM Technology Committee. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to see if there are any other groups that took this up. I would then come back to you to offer your motion. District 7, I know, considered this. Do you want to describe? Henry Orfus of District 7.
Henry Orfus, District 7. We consider this issue, and for the reasons that were just very well described, we believe that the town system is not yet ready for something of this type, that the personal email option that was described is a far easier, cheaper, and more effective way to handle the FOIA problem, and so reporting this, or referring this back, I think is the right thing to do.
Okay. Any other groups take this up? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Moderator, I...
Move to refer this to Legislative and Rules.
Refer this back to Legislative and Rules.
All right, that being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second discussion on the motion to refer Item 16 to Legislative and Rules Committee. Doug Wells, Chair of that committee.
I think it's probably inappropriate that it come back to our committee. Our committee was in favor of this, 12-0-0. We think it's fine as is. If you don't think it's fine, vote it down. If you think it's fine, vote it up. But don't send it back to us, because we've already passed on this, and we think it's appropriate. You can, you can get your email. If you choose not to use it, that's your business. All you have to do is put in recordct.org, and you're in compliance with this, with this resolution.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. Yes?
Hello, I'm Jenny Baird from District 5. I first wanted to say that I wholeheartedly support the concept of standardized email addresses for RTM members. As this item suggests, there's good reason for FOIA for us to have town emails, but also as a governing organization, standardized emails across the organization make it easier for constituents to communicate with us, and it's also what you would expect from any governing body. That said, the rule as proposed has flaws that need to be resolved before we vote on it. I think the reason that we wanted to send, and Town Services suggested sending it back to Legislative and Rules, was that it was not clear what the FOIA exposure actually was, either for the town or for us as individuals. Secondly, mandating emails and then putting the onus back on individuals from a volunteer organization pretty much guarantees noncompliance with the rule. The town needs to figure out a system to create and distribute email accounts in a more seamless way, just like when you start a new job, you are given an email address with a temporary password for you to set up. I've tried multiple times to get my email address, and I'm a professional in that field. I've been unsuccessful, and I think other people have had the same experience of it being very complicated. Whether members comply or not with getting a town email, the town would be on the hook for at least $9,000. This has been brought up already. If we don't figure out a way to make those email accounts easy to set up and use, that would be a waste of that money, and that money is only our baseline, as Richard pointed out, because we'd also have additional training and so forth. Again, since the town currently uses the Microsoft suite for town emails, it's used to being set up in a very closed tech environment, where the hardware is managed by the organization. It's a system that doesn't work so well on devices that are not in line with those requirements. So if you're on an older iPhone, you might be out of luck. That's a headache for us as RTM members, and it's also a headache for the tech support staff, and it could wind up being a financial liability if the town finds itself mandating RTM members use their town email but not providing supported devices. I'm not up for being on the hook for buying us all up-to-date computers and mobile devices to support the system. Given the numerous open questions, I too suggest that this item be taken up again by the Legislative and Rules Committee. I'm sorry.
Are you sure you don't want to postpone this indefinitely?
No, I definitely don't want to do that, and that'd be referred to this proposed Technology Commission that the moderator has, has mentioned. I know that there's several people who've indicated interest in getting involved in that Technology Committee, so I don't know what that process is, but that's where I think this belongs, to come up with a solution that we can all use.
David Detchin, District 10.
I think the appropriate course, in fact, is to kill this sucker now, and let this go to the Technology Committee whenever, in fact, it is established. I sense a significant resistance to this within the RTM, and will likely lead to, as was mentioned, noncompliance. So if you would allow me to amend the motion, I would move to postpone this item indefinitely.
All right, we do, all right, so let's do this according to Robert's rules. There is an order that motions have priority, and let's just see how these stack up. So the motion to postpone indefinitely has the least priority of anything. The motion to refer, greater priority. But if there is no objection to the motion to refer being withdrawn, we can do it upon unanimous consent. Is there anyone who objects to the motion to refer this item back to Legislative and Rules? That it be withdrawn?
No.
All right, there is, there is an objection. So I will call further discussion on, so we will have to dispose of the motion to refer. Further discussion on that motion to refer. All right, I will call for a, a voice vote. If you are in favor of referring this back to Legislative and Rules, you should vote in yes, aye. If you are against that and want to dispose of it in some other fashion, you should vote no.
Mr. Moderator? Under the situation, can we take up the motion to postpone indefinitely after this motion?
Yes, we can. If, if the motion to refer fails, this item remains before us, and we will continue to deal with it. One way we could deal with it is a motion to postpone indefinitely. All right, so I'm calling for the motion to refer. Again, if you want to refer this back to Mr. Wells, who's saying, "Don't do that," you should vote in favor. All those in favor of the motion to refer Item 16 to Legislative and Rules, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
All right, that motion has failed. Mr. Detchin has now moved to postpone Item 16 indefinitely. Is there a second? Further discussion on that motion. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing Item 16 indefinitely, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. Item 16 has now been disposed of. All right, Item 18 now comes before us. I'm not sure who is presenting that. Who is presenting Item 18? On the fracking ordinance, Mr. Morgenot? Is Mr. Morgenot here? Mr. Morgenot is behind you. Rick Morgenot, one of the proponents of this item.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening.
RTM neighbors. This is, this is the ordinance that was before the RTM back in June, on the June call, that prohibited the introduction of waste associated with fracking, oil and gas waste fracking. And as you know, it was referred to a Subcommittee at that time, at the June meeting, and the Subcommittee has introduced a report. It's out there on the RTM rules. I know all of you, we spent a lot of time in the district meetings this past week, and you know, had, had a few questions. And I'm a member of Greenwich Conservation Advocates, and this came to our attention some time ago. We had initially looked at water management issues, conservation issues, and someone in the community brought, brought this item...
Mr. Morgenot, all we want to do is get this before, so we can get our committee report. So this, this is a proposed fracking ordinance.
That is correct.
All right.
All right, so I'm proposing that, that the meeting adopt the proposed fracking ordinance as published in the call.
Okay, so it has been moved. Is there a second? Item 18 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee. We will, Mr. Morgenot, you will get a chance to address this, but our order is to take committee reports and then have discussion.
Good evening. Health and Human Services assembled a seven-person panel to discuss this item because we wanted to make sure absolutely no stone was unturned. So panel members included, Rick Morgenot and Bob Brady, representing Greenwich Conservation Advocates, Allison Walsh and Michael Carter, the two RTM members who were on the fracking Subcommittee and authors of the Subcommittee Report, John Wayne Fox and Jean McLaughlin, representing the town attorneys, legal department, and Denise Savageo, Director of the town's Conservation Commission. Mr. Morgenot started us off by describing how he and a group of concerned citizens formed the Greenwich Conservation Advocates in response to the possibility that fracking waste could make its way into our community and our water or soil. Mr. Morgenot pointed out that 40% of residents rely on well water, and the remaining residents rely on water treated through water treatment facilities, and that our current quality of life is quite dependent on our clean water supply. Mr. Morgenot explained that the state has imposed a temporary moratorium on fracking waste generated from natural gas drilling, but the moratorium does not cover waste generated from oil. The proposed ordinance would ban both natural gas and oil fracking waste, and Greenwich Conservation Advocates want to be proactive about banning this waste, given that the state has not adopted formal regulations for managing such waste. We then had Ms. Walsh and Mr. Carter present their findings. As you've all received a copy of their fracking Subcommittee Report, I'm only going to highlight a few critical issues that they mentioned at our meeting. One, the waste material produced as a result of fracking is often regarded as hazardous and potentially, or possibly radioactive. In the 1980s, Congress exempted the waste material from the fracking process from EPA rules on hazardous materials, which meant that even though the exact same chemicals may occur in other locations and be labeled as hazardous, when the waste is removed from the fracking process, it's not labeled as hazardous. We also spent a lot of time discussing brine. Brine is a byproduct of the drilling process. The drillers drill a hole, they pump in chemicals under high pressure to break apart the sediment that allows the gas and oil to come out, but before you get the gas and oil out, what comes up first are the chemicals that you put in, mixed with the saltwater or the brine. The brine can then be marketed under other, quote, "beneficial uses," and examples that were given were the brine can be distilled into road salts or fluid that's used to, when you're taring a road, sort of a wet coating. Mr. Carter stated that in some cases, towns have used the materials for road coating, and now those towns find that they have radioactive roads that need to be remediated. Unfortunately, there is a loose or non-existent system of keeping track of the brine materials, where they've been, where they're stored, and where they end up. It was then, the question was then raised, is how would this material come to Greenwich? And the most likely way that the contaminated material might enter Greenwich is through the construction business. Fill that contractors use might be contaminated with fracking waste. Ms. Walsh explained that this, quote, "waste is looking for home," and as more communities adopt ordinances prohibiting this waste, those communities without regulations will find that they have become the new home for the waste. And Greenwich does not want to be the new home that you can go to and dispose of this with impunity. And then finally, they stated that 34 towns in Greenwich have adopted regulations prohibiting this waste from coming in, and the idea is that the more towns that can adopt such an ordinance could lead the state to take a more formal action. John Wayne Fox and Jean McLaughlin explained that they do not believe that there's a conflict between adopting this ordinance and current state statutes. Denise Savageo commented that this ordinance is a signal to contractors that the town doesn't want this waste, and the onus is placed on the contractor to know the origin of the material that he or she is using. She explained that when the town hires a contractor for a project, there would be a clause in the contract that stipulates that fracking waste materials may not be brought in and used, and should a contractor violate this ordinance or that rule, it now becomes the responsibility of the contractor to remediate the situation. Again, she wanted to stress that the town is taking a proactive approach with fracking waste. waste. Finally, Allison Walsh of the Law, and the Law Department commented on the remote but valid concern that an individual homeowner may inadvertently purchase contaminated road salts, which, as previously mentioned, could be produced by distilling the fracking waste or the brine. Apply that salt to his or her property and unknowingly contaminate the soil or water. Ms. Walsh stated that the language will be added to the ordinance indicating that homeowners who, on the remote chance, purchase contaminated salt from, say, a Costco would not be held liable, and I believe Legislative and Rules will discuss this point in greater detail. In closing, Health and Human Services would like to thank Allison Walsh and Michael Carter for the tremendous job they did in researching and putting together this comprehensive report. It's clear they spent a great deal of time poring over documents and researching the murky world of fracking waste, so thank you. Our vote was 11-0-1. District 11 voted no. The delegate owns multiple fracking wells in Texas and Oklahoma and disputes some of the claims regarding the implications from fracking waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening.
Hang on one moment. Yes? No.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee took this item up last Monday night. We had Rick Morgenot, Jay Loudon, and Jane Kokersberger of Greenwich Conservation Advocates. We also had Denise Savageau, our Town Conservation Director, and Michael Carter, who was co-chair of the committee that took this up and is the vice chair of Land Use. I don't have anything to add what you just heard from Ms. Vulgaris. We heard all of the same information, except for that last part about what if a homeowner was to acquire this, and as a result, our vote on this item was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Spila with Public Works Committee, report.
This item was not referred to Public Works, but we voted to take it up. We feel, we felt it should have been before us because it has to do with roads, contractors, and waste management, and there is a lot of expertise at Public Works, particularly with regards to waste management. We, in the discussion, we noted first that there were several misstatements, including many of the ones that Ms. Vulgaris has mentioned, and I will go into that in more detail separately if this item isn't referred. But we noted language specifically with the problem, with the language with the item as being too broad, and we were told that it would and has been recommended to be referred back to Legislative and Rules, and we decided not to vote on the item.
All right. Mr. Wells.
This one we'll take.
This is your motion to refer.
We took up this item last Monday evening, and what Ms. Vulgaris said, and I am going to sorely miss coming after her, because she always covers everything, so. The one concern that our committee had was, if you look at the language of the ordinance, it speaks to what bidders have to do, but if you read the prohibitions separately from what the bidding contractors have to do, you can see that it can apply to anybody who unwittingly may buy some road salt, you know, through Amazon or some other source, not knowing where it's coming from, and could actually be putting down hazardous waste on property, and if the town found out about that, they could be fined pursuant to this ordinance. Our committee was concerned that private citizens might come under this ordinance and be fined as a result. While the people, Ms. Savageau was at our meeting, and the town attorney said that was certainly not the intention of this ordinance, we still think that a better practice would be to see if we can rewrite this in such a way that it'll be applied commercially rather than individually. And so, our committee moved to refer this back to the, to this special Subcommittee comprised of Ms. Walsh and Mr. Carter.
Allison Walsh and Mr. Carter.
For the purpose of bringing this back to the March meeting. Our vote on that item was 10 in favor, 2 opposed.
All right. Did any other district or committee take this up and want to report? All right, Mr. Wells?
On behalf of the committee, move that this matter be referred back to the fracking Subcommittee and to be returned to us for the March meeting.
Okay. That now is before us, having come from one of our committees. Discussion on the motion to refer this back to the Subcommittee. Mr. Morgenot?
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I for one, and I think on behalf of our group, Greenwich Conservation Advocates, agree that it's an opportunity, if we send it back to the committee, to revisit some of the language I see circulating already to address the concern, which, incidentally, this homeowner question did come up in some of the districts, and I would like the opportunity to, you know, go back to those members and tell them we've solved the problem. So, the work of the RTM is really done in committee, and I think personally, it's not advisable to try and amend things from the floor, and in doing that, we sometimes ignore the opinions of others, and I don't think we should do that. So, it should go back to the Subcommittee for further review, and I think we have it, but we need to, we have the language, but we need to go to the members in the districts again and come back March stronger, stronger and perhaps with a unanimous vote.
Sounds good. Further discussion on the motion to refer item 18 back to the Subcommittee of Allison Walsh and Michael Carter. All right, I will call for a voice vote. All those, if you are in favor of referring this back, you should vote in favor. All those in favor of referring item 18 to the Subcommittee of Allison Walsh and Michael Carter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. All right. That concludes the business of the meeting. I, again, welcome all of our new members. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Congratulations to Alexis Vulgaris, and should be fun working with all of you. Have a safe trip home.